Good evening and welcome to Bothell City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, April 16th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Councilmember Olson is absent and excused, and the mayor is stuck in traffic on his way. So, moving on to meeting agenda approval. Councilmember Zornst.
I had two items that I wanted to pull for just brief comment. It's AB 19-065 and AB 19-067.
Okay. Anything else anybody wants to pull?
So, I agree. I also am pulling AB 19-067.
Okay.
Proclamations.
Okay. All right. Moving on to proclamations and special presentations.
Public engagement opportunities.
Oh, I always skip that. I'm so sorry. Okay. Oh, there's a lot of them. Okay. Upcoming public engagement opportunities and events. High school 21-plus, Thursday, April 18th, from 7:00 to 8:00 at the Bothell Library. Join Cascadia Advisor Nita Rabanian to learn about another option to earn high school credits needed for graduation. Shred event, Saturday, April 20th, 10:00 to 1:00 at City Hall. Stop by to shred up to three paper bags or two boxes of confidential material or non-confidential material. Earth Day Volunteer Work Party, Saturday, April 20th, 10:00 to 1:00 at North Creek Forest. Celebrate Earth Day by helping us restore the North Creek Forest. And help guide Canyon Park's future, Thursday, April 25th, from 4:00 to 6:30, Canyon Hills Community Church. Join us for an open house to learn more about the visioning process for the Canyon Park area. SR 522 Stage 3 Improvements Open House, Thursday, April 25th, from 5:00 to 7:00, City Hall Council Chambers. Staff will be on hand to answer questions about this project. Okay. Now, we're going to do special proclamations and special presentations. Is it on? Okay. So, this proclamation is a recognition of Country Village. Whereas since its opening in 1981, Country Village has provided community events, family fun, and a lifetime of memories for over 35 years. Whereas people came from all over the Puget Sound region to experience the charming outdoor mall fashioned to resemble a farm town from the Old West. And whereas children of all ages will remember the pond, free-roaming ducks and chickens, pony farm, train rides, pirate boat merry-go-round, Halloween trick-or-treating, the arrival of Santa Claus on his sleigh, Mrs. Claus and the reindeer. And whereas adults will remember the wine walks, farmers' markets, the many unique buildings, restaurants, and shops with opportunities to gather with neighbors. Whereas the citizens of Bothell and the region will miss this iconic destination place. And now, therefore, I, Davina Dewar, do hereby recognize the Loveless Family and Country Village for many years of enjoyment and community spirit in the city of Bothell. Signed this day, 16th, the 16th day of April 2019. I don't think anyone from the Loveless Family is here. We'll send it to them. I forgot my paper with all the recognition. So, we're going to unacknowledge past boards and commission members who are retiring. So, I believe there were two boards and commission members who were not able to make it. Pat Pierce and June Klubeck. So, Pat Pierce was on the Arts Commission, and June Klubeck, Parks and Rec. And then, we weren't sure. Is Joanne Allen here? Okay. So, first, we'd like to recognize Sarah Gliram, who served on the Library Board. Please come and get your plaque. Next is Eric Schaefer, who served on the Lodging Tax Advisory Board.
Thank you so much for your time and energy.
And Roger Cecil from the Planning Commission. And finally, last but not least, Roger Smith for the Parks and Rec Board. Would you indulge us with a photo, anyone who received a plaque? Okay. Thanks, everybody, for their service. Next, we're on to staff briefings. Parks and Rec and Open Space Plan. Tracy Perkowski, thanks for joining us.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm Tracy Perkowski with the Parks and Recreation Department. Tonight, I'm here to give you a high-level overview of the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, otherwise known as the PROS Plan Update, that the Parks and Recreation Department is undertaking this year. So, I know what you're thinking. What is the PROS Plan? You may actually know it as the PROSAP. We're actually updating its name and its acronym to align with the region and state terminology. It's a six-to-10-year plan, which reviews the current status, as well as plans for future parks, amenities, recreation classes, special events, and more, and includes realistic funding options, maintenance and operations, and staffing needs. It is required by Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office every six years for grant projects. But more importantly, it will serve as a guiding document for the Parks and Recreation Department for capital facilities plan, potential land acquisition, service providing, and more. Simply put, a PROS Plan process tells us, where are we now, looks at where we want to be, and gives a thoughtful response to how we want to get there. After all of that engagement and information review is done, we actually will complete a document for the PROS Plan Update for 2019. Let me dive a little deeper for you. Let's start with where are we now. City staff is working with the consulting firm Conservation Techniques to review our existing asset inventory and condition. This takes a look at things like our restrooms, our playgrounds, our sport courts, and more. It reviews our proposed projects in the Capital Facilities Plan, or CFP, our asset replacement schedule, and our budget. It takes a look at existing and complementary plans, such as the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan. And we will complete a review of community changes through a demographic and community profile, along with any mapping changes. From there, we want to learn where we want to be as a community. And so, staff and the consulting team will be doing extensive community listening and engagement process to learn about how the community feels about our existing parks, amenities, recreation programs, and special events, and also what they would like to see in our parks, recreation programs, and special events, using some survey techniques, such as a mailed-out survey and an online survey. But more importantly, we're focusing on a meet-people-where-they-are approach. And so, we're going to be doing pop-up events in our parks, outreach to community groups and other stakeholders, the faith community, and an extensive effort to engage our youth and our young adults through our schools, our sports programs, and U-Dub Bothell. We will also be benchmarking the city of Bothell with similar cities to take a look at their amenities. There'll be council study sessions and guidance from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Now, the staff has been working with our consulting team for two weeks. So, these engagement opportunities are currently being fleshed out and planned. And I'm going to talk about in a bit how to become engaged, find out when our dates, times, and locations will be announced. So, once we spend some time getting to know where we want to be, we're going to be working through a community priority-setting process to assess how to figure out how we get there. Six years from now, what are we going to look like and how do we get there? This is because we're not likely to be able to do everything that is requested by the public. So, during this phase, we're going to be looking at our current gaps in services, explore what we think our levels of service should be. Those are things like how many acres of parkland per 1,000 residents, all with an eye to creating a plan that's achievable, but with a few stretch goals, rather than an aspirational one that proposes projects that never get built or land that never gets acquired. And finally, we're going to be working on the actual writing of the plan update. At this stage, we're also going to be exploring potential CFP projects, that's our Capital Facilities Plan, and looking toward the future, including the required approvals. And whoo, as you can tell, there's a lot to this. We, again, just started our PROS Plan process, and all of this work, the inventory assessment, the document review, community engagement, needs assessment, plan writing, capital facilities planning, and our plan improvement will take through December of this calendar year, and possibly, depending on timing, into the early part of next year. But we are all going to be working hard to get this done, because it literally takes the city to make a PROS Plan. And so, while we're led by the consulting team of Conservation Techniques and Stepherson Associates, there are going to be many opportunities for council input, guidance from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, community input, as well as an extensive interdepartmental team. So, for people who want to learn more, we've set up a webpage as we're just beginning this process. And this is the place to go to learn about those community engagement opportunities, where you can find a park pop-up when we're going to be hosting other meetings. And so, that's bothellwa.gov/pros. You can also sign up for our newsletter. You can also send us an email with any of your thoughts on our facilities, our parks, our recreation programs. And I'm actually going to leave this screen up as I transition into questions, so that folks can copy down this information.
Great. Thank you so much for presentation. Any questions from council? No?
Thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
I just want to make a comment. And so, as you do your outreach to the community, for them to do your community listening and for them to get back to you, sometimes I just want to highlight that not everybody is technology into the technology. So, is there other ways that they will be able to know what's going on and to actually participate?
So, in addition to sort of standard community meetings, we're also going to be doing a mailed-out survey. Those addresses within the community are going to be a random sample, so that it's statistically valid. So, not everyone in the community is going to receive an invitation for a mailed-out survey, but many people will.
So, that's another way of reaching out.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Zornst.
I'm sure I'm going to be echoing what everybody else is thinking, but I feel like a kid at Christmas time. I want to know what's going to be, what it's going to be like in six years. So, it looks so comprehensive. I'm just really looking forward to seeing how this unfolds and matures over the next few years. So, thank you.
When was the last time we did a PROS Plan?
Six years ago, 2016.
So, it's six. Okay. I'm really excited. I think, unlike in a candy store, I'm worried that there'll be so many needs and wants, and we won't be able to fulfill them all. And so, we'll have some tough choices. But I'm excited about the process. There are things that I certainly have in mind that we could add to our parks. So, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
So, because I'm kind of new at this, you did a plan in 2006?
Pardon me?
You did a plan in 2006, correct?
2014.
14. Sorry. I didn't hear you right. So, it would be interesting to me to see what that PRO Plan said and what was accomplished in that time. Can you provide that?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to send that to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Moving on. Update regarding emergency repair on 228 Jack Bartman.
There we go. Good evening. I'm Jack Bartman. I'm a senior capital project engineer in the Public Works Department. I'm going to give you a update on where we are. Actually, we're done with the 228th Street emergency repair that we had this winter. Just to familiarize you with where we're talking about, this is up in the Canyon Park neighborhood on 228th, sort of in front of the QFC Big Five, Zach Zeke's Pizza area. What the issue is, is that we had, this area has always been somewhat wet. We've always had somewhat of a water problem. And for whatever reason, this winter, it got a lot worse. We had water actually coming up out of the pavement. And so, what was happening is that when we were getting cold weather situations, it was freezing. Water, the cars were tracking water all the way down from 15th to 19th. And we were getting a lot of complaints. There were some incidents. Our operations group started basically babysitting this section of the road, watching the weather very closely, getting a lot of sand and salt on the road. But it was decided that they just couldn't keep up, and it was a dangerous situation, and we needed to do something about it. So, on January 16th, our operations group requested that the mayor declare this an emergency so that we could get a contractor out to fix it promptly without going through the bidding process. And the council did ratify that on February 5th. And so, this is what we planned to do, is that we have water that was coming up out of the pavement in the middle of the road. We had a little bit of settlement in the middle of the road. And so, the water that came up out of the pavement wasn't going away. So, what we decided to do is, if you look on the, is the mouse working? Nope. If, we decided to put a new catch basin in on the very lowest point, so that if any water that came up through the pavement or rain that came down would be removed from the pavement in that catch basin. And we also put in a perf pipe underneath the road to intercept any groundwater in the area to help dry out that area, so that water didn't come up onto the road. So, what happened is on January 31st, so two weeks after the proclamation, we got Cayman's Construction on board. We got the contract signed. They had a week to order their stuff. January 31st, we got out there and started constructing, which was a Thursday. The idea was that we were going to do the saw cutting of the pavement on Thursday, which really doesn't impact traffic that much. And then, we're going to come back the next Monday and start to rip up the road and knock it out. You can actually see on the picture on the right that when we cut into the pavement, even more water was coming up through the pavement. There was a lot of pressure in there. So, the problem is, is that if you recall, the next beginning of February, what happened was snowmageddon. And we lost two weeks. Ironically, the rest of the city was so frozen that the ice on 228th really didn't make any difference. And it was just dangerous for our contractor to be out in the middle of the road. So, we held off on the project until the weather got a little bit better. So, then, we went to install this project. That's, the blue pipe there is PVC perforated pipe. We put drain rock in. We wrapped it. We paved over the top of it, all-new catch basins, and it worked great. Everything's, everything in the middle of the road is great. Everything in the middle of the road is dry, except what we didn't catch, because there was so much water in the middle of the road, that there was also water coming up in the westbound lanes. You can see, see in the wheel track on the right picture, and that's actually on the left picture, is right before we started saw cutting. So, there was more water coming up there as well. So, we went back, and we extended that project. We cut another T of perf pipe off from what we put in to the catch basin out to that lane. And what was interesting there is that that T goes right up against a utility trench where a fiber optic line is buried. And that's actually where we found a lot of the water coming from. So, we're thinking that it's coming down those utility trenches. So, but at the end of that, it has worked very, very well, and we've had no water problems on the road since. So, anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, when it comes to the utility trenches, who actually is responsible for them?
Well, as far as water being in the utility trenches, the utilities put, what happens is, is that the soil that's out there is a silty clay, and water doesn't move through it very well. And so, when you cut a trench to put a utility in, you usually put in gravel, which, to make sure it's structurally sound to put the road on, but that often means that water can just move through it easier, because it's a gravel instead of a silt. Problem is, is that, so, the utility went in, and they installed their utility per our standards. So, I know that Boyd, in our utility group, is looking at changing some of our standards to address some, that may take care of some of those things by putting in what's called utility dams, or trench dams, excuse me, where you actually put barriers in the trench to slow down the flow of water. But as far as this particular utility, they did nothing wrong. They installed it per our standards.
Okay. But as far as maintaining those trenches, is that something that the city is responsible for or the utility?
Oh, where their utilities are, it's them. It's absolutely them.
They're responsible for that?
Sure.
Okay.
But they would be, well, I guess that's not completely true. I mean, we typically don't go back if there's minor settlement or anything and go after the utility. If there's like a water break or something like that, that causes a major failure of the road, that's when we would look to the utility to rectify their problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I wanted to ask, so, I think, you know, you're to be commended for dealing with this pretty expeditiously. I saw some comments. People were really happy how quickly we got on top of the problem. But I had a question. So, when we have an emergency like this, we obviously don't have time to do a budget amendment or anything. So, how does the $85,000, where does that come from?
That's coming from the utility budget, the water sewer budget. So, this is considered a storm, a surface water, groundwater issue that's usually addressed by our stormwater system. And so, that's coming out of their budget.
Okay. Perfect. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. And finally, under staff briefings, we have the 2019 Council Salary Commission. Human Resources Director Matt Pruitt.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and members of the council. As you know, the council recently approved the mayor's appointments to the 2019 Salary Commission, the Council Salary Commission. And I'm making the following announcement at the request of those appointed members. In accordance with Chapter 29 of the Bothell Municipal Code, the Salary Commission meets every five years and has 90 days from their appointment to consider and potentially recommend changes to the compensation package for city council members. The commission held its first meeting on Thursday, April 4th, where it reviewed city council data from other cities within our region and discussed next steps. On Monday, April 29th, at 6:00 PM in this room, the Salary Commission will hold a public hearing to gather feedback on recommendations to increase council salaries in line with the data that they previously reviewed. Also, in accordance with Chapter 29, members of the public and the city council are welcome and encouraged to provide comment in person at the public hearing or in writing. Written comments can be emailed to humanresources@bothellwa.gov or to myself directly. According to Washington State laws and regulations that govern, city council salary commissions, decisions by the commission to adjust council compensation are automatically absorbed into the city budget and cannot be changed without a pub, without a public referendum. That's it.
Super. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to city manager and council committee reports. Anyone on council? Councilmember Zornst.
Mine's brief, and then I'll make room for other folks. I just wanted to remind people, LTAC met today, and we're getting ready to launch the Begin at Bothell website. And if any council members intended to go to the launch party next week, be sure you RSVP. It's Tuesday, 3:00 to 5:00.
I have not RSVP'd.
It's a pretty slick-looking website. I think it's going to get a lot of use, so, very hopeful.
Very exciting. Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. And James and I, and I'll share this comments. We attended the Eastside Transportation Planning Meeting, and I thought it was very interesting. It did the master plan for Sea-Tac Airport for the next 10 years, and a regional study that will be done in 2023 to see if we need another regional airport. We are one of the largest airports. I think we're number eight in the people we serve across the nation. So, Sea-Tac has a lot of challenges, and I'll let Councilmember James McNeil finish that conversation.
Am I good to go, Deputy Mayor?
You are.
Thank you. All right. Well, I've got, I've got quite a few. So, I will briefly talk about RPC, Regional Policy Committee. We're going to have another meeting tomorrow. And some of the information that's going to come up in that committee tomorrow is going to be on the solid waste and some of the amendments that Councilmember Lambert has put forward. So, as soon as we have that meeting, I will give an update on the solid waste information that comes out of that. NPRSA, something that we're going to have to really start taking a long, hard look at. Our senior center, we're going through some issues with the senior center right now with some financing struggles and stuff like that. So, we're going to have a meeting tomorrow, try to get as much buy-in from the city of Woodinville, city of Kenmore, King County, and St. Homage County. I'll bring that back to, at our next meeting, what we find out from that. But we do have some very tough decisions to make on the senior center to ensure that we continue to have that funded the way it's supposed to be funded to maintain the buildings. The PIC meeting I attended this last week, there was quite a bit of information that I have coming out of PIC. So, just bear with me a second while I get lined up here. For those of you who don't know, there's a networking dinner event coming up on the 22nd of May. And it's going to be a legislative update. So, if you haven't RSVP'd for that, please do so. We had an updated on the legislative session. Brianna Murphy reported on the small transportation package being considered that would, could fund possibly by three to five cent gas tax or carbon fee. Not sure yet how that's going to go, but it's still being worked on right now. She also stated that the House Bill 2132, which would authorize the tolling on I-405 SR 167, corridor continues to be debated amongst legislators and is uncertain whether or not that will pass in the session. There was quite a bit of conversation around affordable housing and the challenge, Seattle Middle Income Housing Initiative that Microsoft has graciously put $500 million into. A lot of the cities have signed on to that. A lot of the cities have signed on to that initiative, including ourselves. The mayor has signed a letter, I brought that up during the meeting, that we did sign a letter of support for that initiative, and that our council was supportive of it. I also spoke a little bit about the, making sure that we have funding available for youth and seniors in that same conversation. Let's see here, there was a King Conservation District presentation. King Conservation District is proposing an average rate increase of 3.70 per parcel per year. That would generate $2.8 million per year. At the current rate, charges revenues would be, bring about a total budget of 8.9 million per year for the years of 2020 to 2024. And then we get into our King County Parks Levy, that I believe is going to be in front of the King County Council tomorrow, and they're going to be voting on that. There so far is unanimous support for that, that levy that will be coming out in August. Some of the things that are in that levy are, there'll be $2 million available for playground and ball fields, specifically in Kirkland at Big Finn. $2.5 million in acquisition dollars to expand parks on Lake Washington. More than $100 billion to expand funding to preserve open space. $25 million for parks in North King County cities. So that's specifically for the north-end cities like Bothell. $10 million in grant funding to promote equity and disability access to our parks. $44 million for new program to provide large capital grants to jurisdictions repairing swimming pools or aquatic centers. And one of the other big key takeaways is, there is, our council member for the first, Rod, got in there a $2 million for the Wayne Golf Course site. So there's, there is about $2 million funding available for us for the Wayne. So, that is my update. Thank you.
Super. Thank you. Any other updates? Okay, I just have, I think, one. I'll just mention briefly, I attended the Challenge Seattle Affordable Housing Conversation with Microsoft and former Governor Christine Gregoire, and I think I had the slides forwarded to the rest of council, but some really, really interesting and pertinent information on why the missing middle needs to be addressed as far as housing. Missing middle housing is the one sector that's not growing, and hasn't grown. And specifically, I think Microsoft is looking at it because their employees fit into that category. So, lots of good information, and I can send it to anybody from the public who'd like to see that as well. I included it in my newsletter. And then, Transportation Policy Board. So we received an update on Community Transit's Bus Rapid Transit Green Line, which is now running from Bothell to Payne Field every 10 minutes during peak hours. On the first day of operations, the Green Line became the number-two transit route for community transit. So, very successful opening. There are currently 1,700 customers per day, and projected to grow to between 3,700 and 4,700 riders, as it, as it continues to grow. We received a report on the Alaskan Way Viaduct and related projects, and then discussed project tracking and delivery reports. So, basically, the federal funds come through PSRC and then get distributed regionally in a grant process. And it equals, it's roughly about $260 million annually. And within the last year, 17 projects were completed at a cost of 20.8 million. But, the reporting requirements are such that projects have to, that get granting for specific years must meet deadlines. And so, this particular year, there are a number of grant, grants that are not able to move forward. And so there's about $30 million available for projects that are ready to move forward. And Bothell has one of those projects, which is the design phase for the 527 expansion, which would expand the Green Line down into downtown Bothell and Cascadia. So, hopefully, we'll be able to get funding early for that. I think that would be fantastic. And that is my update. I guess, oh, one thing I did want to mention is, Planning Commission is now, their last meeting, they had a conversation about the Critical Areas Ordinance, so we'll be seeing that sometime in the near future. Okay, moving on to visitor comments. We have one person signed up, Al Beganbaum. And if anyone else wants to speak, please, there are forms out in the, in the lobby.
Good evening, gang. Good to see you guys again. You're going to hear from me again about the first responder suggestion I made. I'll keep it brief. I just wanted to point out to you that another deputy sheriff was killed in the state of Washington a few days ago. There'll be another memorial service, and it goes back to what I was talking about. That's memorial services for dead people, doesn't do much for the dead people, maybe helps the families a little bit, but, and this is my rationale for putting on a first responder day sometime in the summer annually. And I just wanted to offer some of my ideas about what could be done to make it work, and make it interesting for, for the, for the first responders and for the general population of Bothell. So if you guys are interested in hearing what I have to say, I'm not going to do it now, obviously, but I'd be willing to sit down with you in a session, off the record or something, to kick some things about. So I'll leave it up to you guys. If you want to contact me, you all know how to get hold of me, so, but I hope that's, you guys will take action on it, and I won't bother you about it again, I promise. This will be my, my last shot. And my parting comment is going to be in the following on, what's your, your proclamation of a country village, is to say, I very much enjoyed Country Village over the years. It's a very iconic place, and the Lovelace family did a fantastic job. It was a great idea. I'm just sorry that it wasn't more profitable for them. It would have still been here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have pulled AB 19065 and AB 067. Would anyone like to make a motion? Councilmember Agnew.
I move that we pass a recommended action.
I think we need caffeine up here. I don't know what's going on. A motion made by Councilmember Agnew to pass the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Zornz. Please, place your votes. Motion passes unanimously with Mayor Rayum and Councilmember Olson absent and excused. Okay, moving on to a public hearing, AB 19070 accessory.
Excuse me.
What did I miss?
We had two items pulled from consent. Sorry.
I just said that. Okay, AB 19065, professional service agreement with KPGPS for on-call construction management services.
So I'm going to be putting our city manager on the spot, just because I would like for the public to kind, kind of hear the rationale and thought behind how we spend our money. And so, I was looking at the on-call construction management services. Have we done that in the past? And can you kind of elaborate for everyone why we need this as we're working on this next project on 5?
Certainly, I'd be happy to. Yes, we've done it in the past, and this is actually one of the best practices for public works. What we do is, we do on-call services to balance out the need for staff for a variety of projects, as well as technical skills. So to have the breadth and depth of knowledge for all the types of construction projects that we have in the city with our capital facilities plan, which you adopted as part of the budget process, we would need to have many, many more positions fully staffed to be able to call upon someone to do maybe soils testing, or some type of, of technical skill related to a construction project. Having these on-call services allows us to keep our staff at a minimum level to be able to manage the projects effectively, and when we need those additional resources, maybe a project's bigger than we expected, or we have a particularly large project, we don't want to add staff and then have fewer projects the following year and lay staff off. This allows us to adjust effectively to the size of projects and the type of work that's happening within their projects. This is very good public management.
So what you're saying is that it's requiring a special skill set that doesn't warrant occupying space 52 weeks a year within City Hall, but when we need it, we need it?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Okay, and then, can I speak to the next item? Is that something that I can do?
I don't know the answer to that.
No.
You're going to have to take one item at a time. I think once the first item is concluded, we move on.
Okay. Okay.
So I move that we pass, I am so tired, I'm having a hard time reading this. We pass AB 19065, the professional services agreement with KPG.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmembers Zornz to authorize the city manager to enter into the professional services agreement with KPGPS in the amount of $400,000, and in substantially the same form as presented for on-call construction management services, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. Please place your votes. Motion carries unanimously with Mayor Rayum and Councilmember Olson absent and excused. Moving on to AB 19067, resolution approving the 2019 Arch Funding and Work Program. Councilmember Zornz.
Our city manager gave us very comprehensive answers. Anybody who was, who's been tracking what's been going on King 5, is they've been tracking Arch for us, saw the report last week, where 42 homes went into foreclosure and were purchased at market price. And so, those homes were lost as part of the affordable housing component. So, my question to our city manager, because we want, we really want Arch to succeed. They have so many good things going on, and this is, I see this as a fine-tuning. So my question to our city manager is, how is Arch addressing this problem as it surfaced?
So, the executive manager was here at the last council meeting, responding to some of the questions you had with regards to their work plan, but also this issue in particular. Arch has been around for about 25 years. It's done a tremendous amount of good. And one of the things that I don't think's really been, been directly pointed out is, Arch is a staff of five. So, it's a very, very small group of people. And for many years, affordable housing wasn't a hot topic, quite honestly, in, in this area, and for the cities that were a member of Arch. Over the last couple, four, five, six, seven years, affordable housing became a really prominent topic, and the demands on the Arch staff only increased over and over and over. And during that period of time, they never asked for more resources, they never asked for more staff to be conscious of the, the cost of, of providing the services and to the member cities. So, I really, I want to recognize that, again, this is a very small staff of people, and the demands on them only increased, especially over the last two, three, four years. So, there's a new executive manager now, there was the same executive manager for a 25-year period. She just took over in October, literally when all of this broke. And, and I have to really commend her. This has been a heavy lift to start, brand-new, leading this, this very small group of people, trying to tackle and understand 25 years of history, how policies were made, how decisions were made. And so, the focus for the board has been, and I've been sort of been on the board probably for almost about two years now, the focus has, is now, we're hiring a consultant to help us understand what options we have available to us, and some of the policies we can put in place, so that when we do come towards another recession, that we can have better, stricter policies, and, and we can support tenants that are in this situation. There, there wasn't the support mechanism available, and so those units were lost to the open market. What we're trying to do now is set up options that could be then available when the next recession hits, or when some of these homeowners do face some struggles. So, again, it's, it's, it's moving in the right direction. It's, it's only five staff members, and they're really, this is one of our top priorities. We talk about it at almost every board meeting, we meet monthly, and, and we're making good progress.
Any other questions? Councilmember McAuliffe.
Oh, sorry, wrong button. So I do, I did notice, and I do appreciate, the executive manager on April 2nd, 2019, answering many of our concerns about Arch. And I thought that we did a very good job of bringing up, you know, how people qualify, and also, how we, violations of income eligibility, and all of those pieces that we have concerns about. I, from what you said, city manager, Jennifer Phillips, I think you are the seat at the table. Is that correct?
I, I was for two years. Michael Cotterman has been sitting at the table for maybe a month or two.
Okay.
But I have been the main, I am the main appointee, and I've been there for two years.
So that was my question, and I appreciate that. So Michael will be taking that over right now?
Right now, we're, we're sort of balancing workloads, so we're supporting each other.
Good. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
So now I'm not running the meeting anymore, ask my questions. Actually, I didn't have a question. What I want, what I wanted to get at was, maybe it is a question. I, I don't know if the public really understands how much we relied on Arch as we were moving through our housing strategy and our affordable housing ordinance, and I, I didn't know if there was any way to really put a number on what, what that saved us in staff time and effort, and just more knowledge about that specific topic, because I, I think that's something that's really invaluable that we, we have received from our participation and membership in Arch. It's probably a rhetorical question, but if you have a stab at it.
I think it's a great question, and I think without Arch, I think each of these cities would be hiring their own affordable housing coordinator. These are very technical skills. Affordable housing is incredibly complicated, and so each of us, all of the member agencies would have to have a full-time person. We couldn't have done it, I'm looking, I know there's some, I, I don't, I don't think we could have done it without a full-time person on staff, developing these policies, developing the strategy, and now carrying these items through. So, it's a huge cost savings, the benefit that we get of being in this regional group, the cost savings, but the knowledge base, and, and they come anytime we need them, they were a huge part of that. It, it literally could not have been done without them. It was that, or hire a full-time person.
Yeah, and I, I just, I, I saw so many Planning Commission meetings where Arch was there, and so it, it may not be apparent to people who don't follow Planning Commission just how much they helped us, but it was really invaluable, and it's a great loss that Arthur's not with them anymore. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Councilmember McNeil. Thank you, Mayor. Most of my questions have been answered, but I did have one. I wanted to, do you know how many cities are actually participating in Arch right now?
We think 11. If I think about the table, that sounds about right.
Okay, and I, and this is going way out on a limb, but do you know which cities are participating?
Oh my gosh, I could try to sort of rattle through the list, but I think I would miss some.
Okay, but probably some of the bigger cities, like Bellevue, maybe?
Bellevue's there, Bothell's there, Woodenville, Issaquah, Samamish.
Redmond's probably there, as well.
Yeah, yes, Redmond's there.
Goes as far south as Mercer Island, and as far north as, as Bothell, Woodenville, and Kenmore.
Okay, so it's.
Includes Newcastle also.
Crazy question, is Mercer Island participating?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, everybody's had a turn, so is there a motion to approve?
So vote.
Moved by Councilmember, Councilmember McAuliffe, seconded by Councilmember McNeil. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead, place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Olson absent and excused. Next on the agenda is AB 19-070, accessory dwelling unit privacy code amendments. I'm officially opening a public hearing, and we have Mr. Boyd to kick it off.
Okay, thank you, and good evening. And I would just like to reinforce the statements that were just made about Arch's contribution, especially during the year that we were formulating the housing strategy, they were invaluable, and I think we, it would easily equal a, a full-time staff member. and I think we, it would easily equal a, a full-time staff member to get through that. And, and a staff ma, we, we would have had to hire a, a staff member with the long experience in that to, to get the, get what we got from, from Arch and, and the Arch team, so. And they did help us with this item early on, not so much these privacy code amendments, but working through the accessory dwelling unit code amendments that, that we brought to you and that were adopted last September. And, and with that adoption, council directed staff from planning commission to consider additional member, measures to address privacy concerns when new two-story ADU is built on or near setback lines. And if you recall, that was the main gist of the amendments that, that were passed last September, allowing carriage house-type units and two-story ADUs similar to the ones that you see in this, in these images. Now, our code doesn't limit openings for single-family homes, which can be taller and built to the same setback line as two-story ADUs. But the ADUs could be built in what would normally be adjacent backyards, if not within the rear setbacks, under the carriage house rules. So they do pose a different issue that we tried to address with these code and, code amendments. So the, the carriage house issue was raised in large part by this project, which we, you might recall from our earlier discussion, where the owners of this historic house wanted to build an accessory unit on top of their garage in the backyard along an alley. But the height limits, setback limits were preventing them. We, we did make the code amendments to allow that type of use, but the concern was that a second-level living unit in that location could potentially look into the backyard of the adjacent residential property. So this particular proposal has no windows on that face, but it certainly could. And the recommendation that we're bringing to you tonight limits the windows in this situation, allows them, but with conditions, and requires screens on decks within 10 feet of adjacent residential properties. The setback is, is five feet. We also addressed decks within that limit. So in this case, that, we've, we exempted landings, you know, outdoor, outdoor spaces that you're really just passing through and applied it just to decks where, where you're really gonna occupy and, and, and in this case, that landing is, is more than 10 feet back anyway. But we'll get into that a little bit here later. This is an example that we also brought to you with the ADU code amendments, the two-story ADU code amendments. And this is an applicant who proposed a two-story ADU in their backyard, in this case, it was six feet from the side property line. Again, these plans didn't include windows facing the adjacent property, but planning commission noted that blank walls are also not attractive. And, and their recommendation that we're bringing to you tonight is to allow them with, with conditions. As part of the planning commission process, we looked at our own regulations and really the only place where we regulate this kind of, the privacy of adjacent uses is where multifamily is adjacent to single-family. The downtown plan does it through a combination of not allowing decks right on the property line and stating that the windows facing adjacent property shall be limited and located to maximize privacy. So one of them is a prescriptive requirement, one is more of a guideline requiring somewhat more difficult discretionary review. In talking with our development review staff, their preference is to have as, these codes as clear-cut as possible. The discretionary items can cause, pose some problems. And, and we also looked at a range of other jurisdiction regulations, from guidelines to more prescriptive requirements. We, some of other jurisdictions go beyond requirements or actually putting it in the code and instead try to address these issues through design guidance through, and this is a page from City of Seattle's Backyard Cottage Handbook, that's what they call detached accessory dwelling units. So this just gives potential applicants a bunch of techniques that they can use to help preserve privacy for their, these new units as well as for the neighbors. So that, all of that was considered by the planning commission in making their recommendations. Along with, they brought up the question of the second-level decks and, and this example, not too far from here, of a house with a second, with a detached accessory dwelling unit, a carriage house-type unit over a garage with a deck off the backside that you can see in the upper-right picture here. So in this case, that deck is well-removed and screened from the adjacent property, but one could imagine a situation where it could be five feet from the neighboring lot. So we devised code measures to address that. So the proposed amendment provides clear direction for applicants and reviewers, but some flexibility to apply these privacy measures where they're appropriate. So for, we've limit these to applying to two-story detached accessory dwelling unit. That's the new, sort of the new kit on the block, the new thing that spurred these code amendments. And the first two situations, 11A here and B, deal with situations where two-story detached accessory dwelling unit is 10 feet or less from the property line. In those cases, you can have windows on that face, but they either need to have a sill height of six feet or higher so that the inhabitants are looking up to the sky and not down into the neighbor's yard, or if they're lower, they have to have obscure glass or glass block, and again, that don't provide direct views into the neighboring uses. The second one deals with second-level decks. If they're within 10 feet of the property line, they need to have a six-foot high side obscuring screen so that they're not directly looking into neighbors' yards or homes. And then the third condition is when their, two-story ADU is 10 feet or more from the adjacent property line, there, there's room for vegetative screening, trees, bamboo, whatever the applicant feels is appropriate. And in those cases, there are no limitations on the openings or, and decks can be there, but they do have to plant side obscuring screens, vegetation that'll mature to, to block the views from those second-story spaces, windows and decks at maturity. So that's the amendment in a nutshell. I'm happy to take questions for staff. And then next steps would be to take any public testimony, I don't, I didn't see if there were any that signed up, and then council deliberations. We're asking you tonight for, for a motion and vote to preliminarily approve the recommended code amendments with any amendments you desire. And then if approved, adoption will be on the consent agenda for May 7th, because we were not able to get the, the SEPA review completed in time for tonight's meeting. So that'll, that'll be completing between now and May, May 7th, and coming back to you then. So, any questions?
All right, thank you. I have the public sign-up sheet, nobody signed up. Does anybody want to give public comment on this item? Mr. Faganbaum, go, go ahead and come up.
Yes, I just.
Go ahead, come up to the microphone so that people can hear you.
I just have a question for you. Have you, have you given any consideration to requiring that windows on those walls be translucent instead of transparent?
So, Mr. Faganbaum, it's just like normal public comment where you give us your comments and then we can respond to those comments after you're done with your.
Oh, okay.
With your turn?
That was just a question.
Oh, okay. Excellent. Mr. Boyd, can you answer the gentleman's question?
Yes, so we, we would allow transparent windows above the six-foot sill height and just translucent or non-transparent windows below that, so you could let light in without creating a privacy issue.
All right, thank you. Nobody else had their hand up, right? Did they want to give a public comment? Nope? Okay. All right, so we're into council, just questions, you guys have any questions of Mr. Boyd? Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. I, I think I only have one question, and that is, you talked about, so trees or green rear bushes being able to be the screen, correct? But what you said was, is that when they reach maturity, so what does that mean in relationship, okay, now we have this ADU and we plant a small tree and it might take it 10 years before it reaches maturity, so how does that really play out then to be a screen?
Well, that's understood that, that some of these measures, like throughout our code where we require trees, they, they often don't serve their full purpose immediately, but that eventually there will be that screen and, and we'll be reviewing those to make sure that the, that the trees selected and, and approved are such that will provide that screen as soon as possible.
As soon as possible, okay. I, I just know how long it takes a tree to grow, so I'm just concerned that, you know, we don't have four or five or six years before it becomes, reaches maturity and we have someone that doesn't have a screen. So I'll leave it up to you, but that's my concern.
Councilmember Zornz.
Well, I thought I understood the windows and now I'm confused. So if, if it's a 10-foot setback, there's more latitude on what kind of windows can go in? Am I understanding that correct, correctly?
There are no, no limitations if it's 10 feet or more.
Okay.
Only if it's less than 10 feet.
Okay, okay, all right. I was, I was tracking you then. And then another question, are the trees, can they be deciduous or will they be required to be year-round protection for, is there a prescription for what, what's recommended on plants that go in?
The, the code requires that they be sight obscuring at, at maturity, so that would essentially require them to be year.
Evergreens.
Evergreens, yeah. Not necessarily conifers, but yeah, evergreens.
Okay, okay, because that can be important, especially in the middle of winter and everybody's got their lights on and it's dark early. And, and then the other thing is just not, is, is not a question, but a comment. In this drive to create more density in urban areas like Bothell, I love this idea of ADU because it still protects the sovereignty of homes, single-family residents, but it still creates more density in a very neighborhood-friendly way. So I just love what you've done here. So pass, please pass on our thanks to staff and to planning commission for creating a lot of thought and, and consideration that thinks about neighbors as well as, as function. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
All right, I think there's no more, oh wait, Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. Any clustering provision that we have right now, do we have a window, something in there for windows like this?
We don't, and, and as I said at the beginning, we don't really have any regulations on the height or size or transparency of windows for single-family homes adjacent. And so they can be built within five feet of the adjacent property without any restrictions. So that was another reason why we wanted to keep these code amendments pretty limited, because we're kind of venturing into some new, new territory here.
And then do you feel, would there be conditions where you just couldn't put the windows on the, the ends where you're not close to that 10 feet so that you would, by not being able to put windows on the sides, you'd be essentially windowless?
No. Basically, this would really only apply to one side of a, of a, a second level of a ADU, so that the other three sides would, would provide opportunities for windows.
Okay, thank you.
So just real quick, so I just want to make sure I understand, so we put things in here, because I just have this concern about sometimes neighbors get upset with each other, and then you're gonna build this thing in your backyard, and of course, you put the patio like right it, right at your neighbor, right? So I just wanted to make sure that these, staff feel these provisions really will help make that not an attractive option for people, or at least it'll make it so they, you know, would think about maybe putting that patio and there were those windows and things on the other sides of the building?
We think so. It does create additional expense to, in some cases, to do the, the six-foot-high side obscuring screen. The vegetation is something we'd like to see anyway, you know, the more trees that we can get, the better. And where you have room, at least 10 feet, we think, we thought that was an appropriate solution, but yeah, we do think these will be effective.
Yeah, a six-foot screen on your porch seems pretty deterrent to me at least, because what are you gonna look up, I guess, at the sky from your porch, but?
When it'll, the, the illustration that I gave probably wasn't the greatest, probably the more likely situation is where you have it coming off of the side and, and then you just put the six-foot screen on the side that faces the, and the rest of it would be open to the back, for, to the yard, yeah.
Okay. All right, cool, I think that's everybody's questions, everybody good? Okay, is there a motion?
I'd like to make, like to make a motion to preliminarily approve the recommended ADU privacy code amendments and direct staff to place the ordinance on the consent agenda for adoption once SEPA has been completed.
Second.
Moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by Councilmember Agnew, to approve the, preliminarily approve the recommended ADU privacy code amendments and direct staff to place the ordinance on the consent agenda for adoption once SEPA has been completed. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Agnew?
No, it's been a long process to get where we are today. I think it's kind of appropriate since it's Autism Awareness Month that we're putting ADUs up there, because I know there's a, a number of families in the city of Bothell that are, want to put an ADU up just for their children and just for their parents or grandparents. So I, I totally support this and I think it's the right way to go about it, and I, I just want to thank you very much for all your effort and hard work.
It's really nice of you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I also will be supporting the motion cautiously, always being aware that things that we add, barriers and screens and things like that add costs, so hopefully we can do this in a manner in which we can keep the cost down for the affordability element of it, but I will be supporting the motion.
Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to thank staff and planning commission for their work. I watched planning commission go through this process. I, I think the end result is very clear and straightforward and addresses concerns that I had about privacy. I just, I think as we become more dense, it's really important to be sensitive to people's privacy and, and sense of space. So I appreciate all the hard work and I think it's a great solution.
All right, seeing no further discussion, go ahead, place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Olson absent and excused, and we are on to, lost my spot on the agenda, there we go. Boards and commissions, AB 19-071, Bothell Arts Commission Propose 2019 Work Plan, and
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. I'm Danae McGee, the Tourism Manager for the City of Bothell and the Art Liaison for the Bothell Arts Commission. And I have three of our seven members here with me tonight. Mike Doan, the Chair of the Arts Commission, Kelly Atkinson, the Vice Chair, and Katrina Sather, who's also on the commission. And they'll be speaking about the three subcommittees that we have in place. in place. So tonight, we are asking Council to review the Bothell Art Commission's proposed 2019 work plan, and the use of the budgeted general funds and 1% for public art funds. And this work plan aligns with Council's 2019-2020 goals of economic development and community So previous city actions, back in 2009, Council adopted a 1% for public art program, and this is 1% of city-owned capital projects. And the current budget is $156,378. And these are funds that can only be spent for public art. In 2017, Council adopts the Bothell Arts and Festivals Commission, later changed to the Bothell Arts Commission, and that was in 2018, it was a name change, to advise Council on the allocation of 1% for public art funding, promotion of fundraising for art and culture, and promotion of arts and culture in the community. And then in 2018, Council adopts the 2019-2020 Arts Commission Budget of $57,678 for the 2019 year, and $61,301 for the 2020 year. And these figures include the 30% time of staff dedicated to the Arts Commission. So the work plan, and what the Arts Commission is requesting Council consider adopting this evening, is, includes nine tasks, and it's broken down into the number of hours available for staff time, which comes to 624 hours per year. So the nine tasks are aligned here, lined up here, and then there's a timeframe, and the hours that we are anticipating, as well as a description of those hours, and the source of funding. So the first task is the City Hall Gallery, and this includes planning, marketing, advertising, coordinating with artists and the committee. It's anticipated that we would spend about 25 hours per artist, and we have four artists that are selected for the 2019 year. And the funding from this will be coming from the general fund. And I'd like to turn this over now to the Chair of the, of this Subcommittee, Katrina Sather.
Hello. First, I just want to say thank you so much for your support through funding, and through our staff member, and through our liaison, Tom Agnew. One of the first goals that the Bothell Arts Commission had was to establish a professional, dynamic, and welcoming gallery within the city, within the walls of City Hall. We did it because Bothell is culturally rich and diverse, and we're using the City Hall Gallery, we hope, to showcase our area's talent, creativity, and expertise in the arts. Bothell's changing and growing, as you know, and City Hall Gallery is just one way of showcasing and embracing that change. We've done this by creating a curated and rotating art display that showcases and supports local artists roughly for a year. Our current selection was jury, or our current selection for 2019 and 2020 was juried by members of the Arts Commission, the City of Bothell staff, and members of the Dive-In Group. Danae's been instrumental in supporting Bothell Arts Commission to ensure that everything is displayed and selected in a, with the utmost of professionalism. We're continuing our exploration of utilizing art to bridge City Hall and the community by hosting artist receptions. For example, we're having, May 21, Kimberly Leo will be the current artist, and the boards and commissions are meeting before the City Council meeting. And so we'll be inviting the public and the artist Kimberly Leo to that as well. We're investigating different types of sandwich boards, inviting the public into the space, increased print media, and activity via the city's social media. We're also continuing to explore ways to reach out to Uda Bothel, Cascadia, and local schools as part of our City Hall Gallery. Special note, economic impact, over six pieces of art have been sold, and if you wanted any of Dennis's, two are already sold. So I think the artists are, we're starting to see just generating some activity, and we're just really grateful, and we would love your input as we continue to grow the City Hall Gallery. Thank you.
Thank you, Katrina. All right, task number two. This is the public art program, the dedication to using 1% for art funds for coming up with a potential project for the Living Wall, which is here at City Hall. This is estimated to be about 52 hours, and it will include the call to artists, the jury process, the selection of the artist, all of the contracting that goes on, and then the actual implementation. And this will be occurring, kind of the backend will be occurring, kind of the third and fourth quarter of this year. And then we'd be looking at not actually doing projects until 2020, just because we're still working on getting that wall ready, and that won't be available until the end of December. The third task is Arts Commission meetings. Anticipate about five hours for each of those meetings. There's the prep time, the actual meeting, and then the follow-up after that. That also is funding through the general fund. Admin, support, professional development are the next tasks, number four and five, and that also is coming from the general fund. The sixth task is Bothell Film, and this was a, this was a planning project, very much in the planning phase, because back in 2018, we had no funds available to use for programming outside of 1% for public art. So we are at that point now where we're moving from planning to actual implementation. The holdup in the past has been no funds, but also we were having a tough time finding an actual location to kick off this series. And I think we've come up with a plan for that, and we're really excited to move forward. And I'd like to now have Mike Doan come up, and he'll be talking to you about the Bothell Film Program.
Thanks today. I want to echo Katrina's thanks to the Council for its support, especially Councilman Agnew for sitting on the commission. His wisdom has helped us greatly as we formed this commission. I came on board a couple of years ago to start what I wanted to, I thought at the time was going to be, let's have a film festival in the summer, it sounds great, get some citizens involved. Since then, it kind of evolved into, let's turn this into an artist's film, and get more of the community involved based on cultural and other aspects. So we've been reaching out to a lot of cultural communities around, in addition to Uda Bothel, to try to set up what we call Bothell Film. And the idea is that it's meant to provide a way for a lot of different groups in the community to come together, watch films from different locations, different groups, different backgrounds, in a way that where you can share ideas, sentiments, express our ideas for it. And so what we decided was, we need to turn this into probably two to three times a year, we show some film at a location around Bothell, TBD. We've been speaking with McMinnamans. We can get the Thorndike Room for free for a couple of shows per year to reduce our costs. And we've reached out, like I said, to cultural communities to say, what films would you recommend? I got some feedback from them. We're reaching out to faculty at Uda Bothel to see if they will help along with us. But the idea is to grow it from just a few times a year into maybe four or five times a year, and get the community together in an environment all year round, not just in the summer, where we can just take a look at film as art. And I think that's why we have it in the Arts Commission as it is right now. As it grows, we're going to continue to solicit ideas from citizens, from other groups in the community, and we eventually would like to turn it into a film program that is recognized, not maybe as big as CIF, the Seattle Film Festival, but certainly an adjunct to that. And this also includes treating film as art in, outside on, perhaps on buildings. So this is the things, the things that we are looking at right now. We appreciate your help. We're going to start small. We're going to try to keep costs down as much as we possibly can. We hope that we get a lot of people turning out. The Thorndike Room is not that big, we'll pack that out, and then maybe move on to larger venues. So from now, moving forward, we're looking forward to maybe doing two films this year, sometime in the fall, and then after that, who knows how large it'll grow. Thanks again for your support. I'll turn it back to Danae.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, next on the plan is the grant applications that we could be applying for potentially in the fall through 4Culture. We're anticipating about 20 hours of work and doing two grants. The work includes all the research, and putting together the budget, and writing the grant, and then monitoring and signing contracts. And task number eight is Facilities Grant that we wrote last year to 4Culture, and this is to build a display case for three-dimensional art that would be placed in the gallery right outside. And there was a bit of a hold on this grant, and we now are anticipating to hear if we'll be receiving funding in the next couple of weeks. This is a matching grant. We would not have been able to apply for this last year because we didn't have general fund monies, but now that we do, we're able to go after more funding through grants. We've asked for about $15,000. About $7,500 would come from, from the grant, and then we would match that with our general funds. So keeping our fingers crossed that we get the funding for that. And there's about 20 hours that would be dedicated to finding the person to build the display case, and then the contracts that would be needed, and then, and then actual implementation. And then the final project for the year is a grant that we submitted also to 4Culture. This is a new project, and it's called Creative Consultancy. And it's a project that, there's some leeway on how you build it. We chose to look into hiring a consultant that would help us create a cultural plan, and this would be the roadmap for us moving forward as a commission. Since we're so new, since we have so many different ideas, we really feel that it's important to hear from the community and do a series of stakeholder meetings. So we've got quite a bit of time dedicated to this, and we did receive the funding for Phase One, and the commission voted at their March meeting that they wanted to use some of their general funding for Phase Two as well. And I'm going to turn it over now to Kelly to let him go into some of the details of that project.
Good evening. On April 25, the Bothell Arts Commission is officially beginning the process of developing a cultural plan for the City of Bothell. Developing this cultural plan will take time. Over the next two months, we will ask for input from city leaders, residents, business owners, educators, students, seniors, and others. Phase One will include reaching out to these groups, and organizing a series of meetings to gather community input. A cultural plan will be a guide to help us make informed decisions so everyone can celebrate art in our community, and appreciate the unique cultural fabric of Bothell. In 2018, the Bothell Arts Commission partnered with 4Culture to help us with the creation of Bothell Cultural Plan. 4Culture provided grant money to pay for Phase One of the process. And I'd like to recognize Danae McGee for her help in securing this opportunity. Members of the Bothell Arts Commission researched cultural plans, conducted interviews, and selected Una McClendon to guide us through the creation of Bothell's Cultural Plan. Una is a certified facilitator specializing in arts and culture, policy, and strategy. She has an impressive track record of success, helping many cities and arts organizations with this process. The Bothell Arts Commission is excited about this process of discovery. A portion of our budget has been dedicated to pay for Phase Two of this important community project. Phase Two is scheduled for September of this year. We thank you for your support.
Thank you, Kelly. So that concludes our presentation, and we can take any questions or comments that you have.
Oh, you're ready? Okay. Is there any questions? Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to really thank all of you for your work. I know it's all volunteer, and being a part of the Bothell Arts Council is really important to our community and to the city. So, and Danae, thank you also.
They get a big lion's share of the reward here. They work so hard, and like, as you say, they dedicate their time, so.
In a very short period of time, you have really done a lot. I'm very excited about your, number nine, when you go into your creative, for culture, with 4Culture, you go to the cultural plan, right? And I think that's really exciting to hear from the community, and to find out what they would like to see as well. One of the things I'd like to stress is that while we focused a lot of the art today on City Hall, I'd like to see it move out toward the community as well. I love the idea of the film festival, and I think that's a great move out to the community. I'd also add, and you put a few names out there, University of Washington, Bothell, Cascadia, and the students. I have a young, I have a student group from Bothell High School, and what they want, what they're asking for is, these students are asking to be part of the planning process. So whenever you are doing something to create a cultural plan, or another plan with art, please include the students and their voice, because that's what they want.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmembers Zorn?
A quick question, and you may, I'm thinking performing arts, and you may have had that discussion, and you have said, that's not within our purview, we're going to let the Performing Arts Center deal with it. But would your, would the consultant be able to find fits for performing arts? Is that part of on-your-radar for our area of where we could add, you know, dance and theater that has a cultural aspect to it? Is that something the consultant can do?
Absolutely. We want to engage the North Shore Performing Arts Foundation to be part of the discussion. We certainly don't want to compete with them, because they're doing an amazing job as, you know, as they are right now. You know, questions that we have are, can we facilitate their success? And moving forward, you know, how can we help them be more successful? We don't want to compete with them, but we definitely want them to, to rise, you know, as high as they can, and, and we hope to be that conduit. But I think Una will be the person that can really help us formulate and, and move forward with, you know, how that relationship works, and, and how it can be successful for all parties involved.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. You had mentioned, I think it was the, kind of the grant applications. Do those grants go towards administration costs?
No, those go toward either building, like the display case. The admin would, for the cultural plan, would be Una, so that, that's an admin cost. And then we received a sustained support grant, and that is money that we'll be using toward Bothell Film, and, and probably the City Hall Gallery is my guess.
Okay.
Most of it would be for Bothell Film. And then we've got some money set aside, too, for, for marketing and advertising. But all of my admin costs comes from the city's general fund, that is separate than what was adopted by Council in 2021.
Okay. I was just, I was asking the question more or less, in case there's grant opportunities out there that we might be able to go after, other than the current ones, and maybe parks, levees, things like that, that might be coming up. You had mentioned the film, and I think the Thorndike Room, I think, is what was mentioned of where those would take place. Is there an opportunity to have film in the parks, things like that? Have we, has there been any discussions around that, or?
There has. Thanks for asking. There has been, and we've looked into the cost of renting portable blow-up screens and things like this. Challenges are always around security, challenges around, you know, making sure the area is secure. Also, there's a challenge around securing film rights. We can't just show a film for free, because it's a public display, so we have to pay someone, some film rights group, to show a film like that. So we've thought about that. We've looked into it. It's part of it. We wanted to start way smaller than that, and then perhaps build up to that eventually. There's other groups that do, like, film festivals in parks now. We don't want to compete with them. But that's what we, that's, in our research, that's what we discovered. It can be done. There's a bit of cost attached to it, because of the size.
Okay. And then, would that be the same application for the festivals and stuff that it would be in the parks?
That I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to go through the same permit process as anyone else.
Okay. Yeah, great work. I think it's fabulous how far you've come. I look forward to seeing the future, you know, 10, 15, 20 years down the road, what, what we're going to look like, and all the different things that are bringing a sense of community to Bothell. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
So I was just remembering the first time.
So I was just remembering the first time we got together. I don't know if you remember, but I remember there were a million ideas and council said just take your time, try to focus and be patient. And I feel like you've totally done that. I can sense your focus on just a couple things and starting small and I appreciate that. I'm thrilled with the film event. I think that's really exciting. I almost feel like Bothell's like growing up and becoming a cultural center and there are so many pluses to that. I'm wondering, as far as involving the public in the cultural plan, are we expecting or anticipating to reach out to different cultural organizations and involving different ethnicities in that?
Yeah, absolutely. That'll be a vital part of what this is. You know, we're not just about the arts, but we're also about culture. So reaching out to every community that we can is really important to the success of this plan.
Historically, it feels like it's very difficult to bring different groups into the fold and I think this is a fabulous way to do that because they all bring their own rich cultural identities and art. And I love the idea of using art to create community in Bothell, so I'm just thrilled. I'm excited and anything that I can do to support you, I will.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Agnew?
This is an impressive group. I just want to tell you that. You know, I can remember when the deputy mayor kind of shrugged me into this direction and I'm going, you know, what do I know about art? I'm a knuckle dragger that used to bring an ax to everywhere he went to. So I kind of felt like a bull in a china shop, but I'm very impressed with the expertise that this group has, their passion, their commitment, and trying to get the most out of the least. They've gone out for grants, they've pulled in a bunch of money elsewhere, they have a ton of wonderful ideas on how to get people, our citizens, involved in the arts. They're selling paintings, they're selling artwork here. That's, it's so impressive what they've done that I really, my hat is off to all of you. You've done an outstanding job.
Well, thank you, Tom, and we really appreciate you at the meetings because you are our expert next to Roy and with Robert's rule and we really are valuing that very much.
That's scary.
What have you been doing?
I've been reading up on it. So, does anybody else have any questions or?
Can I make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approved the Bothell Arts Commission's proposed 2019 work plan.
I second that motion.
Moved by Councilmember Agnew, second by Deputy Mayor to approve the Bothell Arts Commission proposed 2019 work plan. Is there any discussion on the motion? I just want to take a chance and thank you all. It seemed somewhat of a misfire when we initiated the committee and I don't know if you guys were there or not, but thank you, you were there. Thank you for hanging in there with us. Helped us too to kind of focus what we needed to explain what we wanted, but you guys have delivered a ton. Like this, the City Hall is so much more lively with all the artwork and the rotating artwork. I just, you guys have done a fantastic job, so thank you. And for the discussion of the motion, it's unanimous, place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Olson, absent and excused. And we are on to, are we doing for time? Are we good? Let's see, AB 19-072, ordinance adopting historic Main Street area transportation impact fees. And we have Boyd Benson.
Boyd Benson, Public Works Utility Manager. So I'm here tonight to present you some information about the proposed downtown transportation impact fee. Just to give you a bit of background, this is, transportation impact fees are one-time fees that are paid by new development and that's to address capacity and system-wide improvements from new trips generated by the development. Currently, our transportation impact fee program is based on the 2014 City of Bothell Transportation Study, Impact Fee Study. That fee schedule is updated annually by CPI and we are looking at updating that transportation impact fee study this year. Transportation impact fees do not fund existing deficiencies. They are meant to address system-wide improvements to accommodate future growth. And that's really important in this discussion. So a bit more background on this item. Historic Main Street, we had some comments back in 2016, 2018 during the Main Street project about the cost of change of use projects within that area. And one thing that was raised is there's only a limited amount of parking within downtown area and that quite a bit of the trips that are being generated from within that area are multiple pass-by trips. So one vehicle trip may result in multiple visits to different commercial enterprises. Based on that, the city commissioned a study by Faire and Peers to look at that area to see if those fees were appropriate for that type of pedestrian-oriented space. And those results were presented back to City Council in 2018. And at that time, there were concerns raised by City Council about reduced traffic impact fees and how they could change the historic buildings or character or the pedestrian-oriented use of that area. And that's what we're addressing this evening. So just a bit more information on how we currently look at impact fees. For large development or redevelopment, vacant parcel of property or underutilized parcel of property that you change the use significantly by creating many lots or many dwelling units or commercial units. Usually what you see is a consultant comes in, looks at the total trip generation. Impact fees are assessed by PM peak hour trips. So if you have zero development in a site and you've put in 100 single-family residential units, it's one PM peak hour trip per unit, so that's 100 transportation impact fee to be collected. And for these large projects, it's common that you hire a transportation consultant to look at the impacts, evaluate the required mitigation, any improvements that are required, and also look at the impact fee itself. For single-family homes and smaller developments, most applicants go directly to our fee schedule. So if it's a, if it's a single lot that has zero homes on it, they want to create homes, they'll go to our impact fee schedule and this house develops one trip. What is unique about the Main Street areas, we see lots of change of use. And change of use for an existing building can, if let's say if you go from retail to restaurant or some other type of commercial enterprise, you have existing trips that use that building. And that's basically, you've paid into the system for a certain amount of trips. You change that use, you're looking at paying the difference in, from the existing use to the future use. And if you are in an area that's pedestrian-oriented like downtown historic Main Street, quite a few of those trips are already existing. Like I said before, it's maybe one vehicle trip, they park on the roadway and they visit multiple sites. So the fee schedule does not really address these pass-by trips and therefore the fee for a change of use may be relatively high to the burden on the system. So as I said before, for large developments, quite often you hire a transportation consultant to look at these costs and help understand the impacts. For these change of use for an existing building on Main Street, that's quite an expensive exercise to go through for a small change. So what we're bringing for you tonight is a proposed adjustment to create special categories for historic Main Street change of use. And the purpose is to charge a fair fee for a change of use and to help support economic development and maintain the pedestrian-oriented vision of that area. And our goal is to make sure that the fee is commensurate with the impact. We have addressed as part of this evaluation, the limited amount of parking, so the potential for fewer new trips and also the pass-by trips. We'd like to look at promoting economic development with restaurant, retail, and other services and support downtown redevelopment. So if you have an existing building and you have the choice to do a change of use and have a new tenant come in, we want to make sure that that fee is fair as opposed to the alternative. If you can't get a tenant, your choice could be to sell the building or redevelop to enlarge the site and create more of a larger-sized structure. So this graphic up here is kind of intended to show how we see this. This is the main difference right here from what was proposed back in March and that is to limit these fees only to the existing area of the existing building. So in the little cartoon down below, if you have a certain-sized building that you're not changing the size, you're not adding on to it or making it larger, you can apply these change of use rates from, let's say, a retail to a restaurant. And that makes pretty good sense. You're not increasing the burden, you're using the same space, it's the same parking, there are pass-by trips. You can use these lower Main Street transportation impact fee rates. If instead, you choose to go through the process of removing that building and replacing it with a larger building after you go through the historic review process and the rest, the only way this fee applies is for the existing area. So on that graphic down below, if you had 1,000 square feet of residential or a restaurant and your new, much larger building had 1,000 square feet of restaurant, that would, that area would use the new historic impact fee rates. However, anything above and beyond that, additional commercial or residential units would pay the full impact fee. And the way we address this, going through legal, is to add a new footnote and it's that first one on top to the fee schedule. Historic Main Street rates may be applied to the usable square foot area of an existing building or an equivalent area in a replacement building that cannot be applied to any accessory square foot area or addition or replacement building. So the intent here is to promote economic development, change of use opportunities so that we can make sure that our downtown buildings are rented out and the same fashion, not encourage wholesale redevelopment of the downtown core. So this is a quick summary of the proposed changes. You can see the existing 2019 rate for a bank and currently it's 3648 per square foot. If it's, if it's a change of use, let's say you went from retail to a bank in a historic downtown area and you did not expand the building size, you'd be going from a 3648 per square foot to a 2619. And you'll see that 2619 is basically repeated down through each of these categories. That's what Faire and Peers determined to be a fair rate for new trips for these type of historic downtown change of use. And it only applies to a handful of categories. It's daycares, fast food, small supermarkets, and convenience markets. So in summary, the proposed fee, we believe, is a fair assessment of the traffic impact from change of use within a historic downtown area. It supports continued vitality of this pedestrian-oriented use. It promotes economic development. As I stated before, if you have a vacant building and you can't find a tenant for it, these reduced historic downtown impact fee rates could help promote reuse and change of use. And as a consequence, we may see a minor reduction in traffic impact fee credit or traffic impact fee revenue to the city, but we think this is de minimis with respect to the increased economic use of downtown. And that's what we have for the presentation this evening. We're requesting council direction and we'd like to answer any questions you have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Benson. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you for the presentation. When this last came before us, I had serious concerns that we might inadvertently be incentivizing the demolition of historic buildings. So I'm relieved to see that we've addressed that and I feel it's really important, after we invested $7 million in the reconstruction and redesign of Main Street, that we not do anything to prevent it from getting back to a healthy place. Those business owners have been through a lot in the last few years and I would like to support them any way I can and this makes it much easier for me to vote yes. And I wondered, do you see any, any serious financial implications with this change or is it probably relatively minor in terms of what we collect?
Relatively minor compared to what we collect for major redevelopment projects.
Oh, sorry. It's on, it's on the slide as it's been pointed out to me. So I just want to say that I fully support this. I'm really very grateful that my concerns were addressed and I look forward to hoping that, or to seeing that this has an impact on Main Street and makes some businesses viable and produces some variety of businesses on Main Street. So, thank you.
Councilmember Agnew?
With the fee increases, where does this put us in regards to other cities that are comparable to us?
Very good question. We did not evaluate, I'm not familiar with other cities that have this type of incentive program for this small of an area. Other cities have transportation analysis zones or zones that have different rates because of the type of development that occur within those zones or the type of system projects that have to be done to support development in those zones. So there are those, but this is relatively unique. So if you compare our, in general, our transportation impact fees are pretty middle of the road with respect to other communities. I would say that this program, these proposed fees are less than other communities.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. So one of the thoughts that we have in some of the buildings on Main Street is for them to build a second or third floor with a setback. This would mean that they would go back to the original rate. Is that correct? If they added on?
What it means is if they did a change of use, let's say in the existing building, they'd have the lower rate for that portion, they'd pay the full burden rate for the new portion of the building. And that, that is fair and equitable because you're generating new trips, you're generating new impacts to the system because you're expanding the area.
Right. And then I think the second question I have would be, this does not mean that they have to retain their historic look. They only have to retain their footprint. So the building as it exists, as long as it doesn't grow larger, but it doesn't have anything to do with the facade of the building.
This proposed fee has nothing to do with that. That's looked at separately.
Yep. Thank you.
Councilmembers Orange?
I appreciate, I've heard from you, Councilmember McAuliffe, and from Deputy Mayor Duer about the concerns for facade and we will be talking about facades at some point down the road. Yes. Okay. So there's that answer to that question. Now it's just a comment. I am not a small business owner, but looking at the thought that's gone into this, I'm just eager to see how that's going to resonate with the community because this looks very encouraging. And thank you for putting this together and hearing our concerns. And I'm very optimistic for Main Street, having that small town but robust feel to it. So, thank you.
Thanks for that comment.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. You said, in reading the slide, it does say it's minimal or minor or no real impact. Where do the, on the traffic impact fees, where do those fees go? What do we use those fees for?
For CIP, for capital improvements identified in the transportation impact or the TIP improvement program, yes.
Okay. And so, hearing the presentation from you earlier, it sounds like by, by doing this, it's going to allow us more of a vibrant, call it vibrant downtown where our buildings are actually rented and there, to me, seems like an economic development opportunity. Is that my understanding?
We believe so. And one thing that, just to get a little deeper in the weeds here, applicants have the right to pay a consultant to do exactly what we're doing here, to show that the impact is less and the fee should be less. And what we're trying to take care of this is, we've had quite a few of these reports come in and we review them and we go through the process to make sure they're correct. That's kind of the, not the direct basis for these fees, but it's kind of a proxy for these fees. these fees. So what we're doing is we're cutting out that whole process for a small-business owner. Instead of having to pay $2,000, $3,000 to a transportation consultant to do all this work, we've done the work, we've set these fees fairly, and they can come in and we can apply them directly. So it's, as you say, it is economic development, in my opinion, because it's cutting out that cost for a small-business owner to have change-of-use within that area.
And it sounds to me like that's an expense of the business owner, not the land, the property owner. Typically, correct?
Mostly, yes.
The small business that would be moving into the, to our area would be the one absorbing that cost. Is that correct?
Well, that'd be a private, yeah, it'd be a private arrangement between, it's one or the other, but it's still a cost to either the owner or the business, the business itself.
Okay. So, I mean, just based on what I, the presentation you gave me a little earlier today and then what I'm hearing now, it seems like this is moving in a positive direction for us. It's going to allow the property owners to get their properties rented. It could, you know, we may see a higher use or more patrons in the area, but that's what we're looking for, it sounds like, for the vibrancy of our Main Street, the ultimate goal of why we put so much money down there. So I think it's a win-win for not only our community, but for the small businesses there, as well as the property owners. So I'm super excited. I will say that along the lines of the deputy mayor's concern, I also have that concern of the facade, so hopefully that will come back to us at some point in the future.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Second and by LaTia. Let's give it to McAuliffe, Councilmember McAuliffe, to adopt the proposed ordinance in many Bothell Municipal Code 17.045.070, the transportation-impact fee schedule. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please for vote. Passed unanimously with Councilmember Olson absent an excuse. Everybody ready for a break? Yeah? Yes? Okay. So we're going to go to break. We'll be back at 8:05.
All right, Bothell City Council is back from break and we're into AB 19-073 Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy, Lit, Lift Annual Accountability Report. And we have, let's see, oh, Works Director, I always say your name wrong, Leonhart? Lenhart? Lenhart. There you go.
Yes.
I always want to call you Lionheart.
That's okay. That's a very noble name to have. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. I'm here for our second annual Safe Streets and Sidewalks Annual Report, as promised, in the 2016 Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy, Lit, Lift voter measure. So the initial assessment for Safe Streets was 50 cents per 1,000 of assessed valuation. In 2018, because of growth and additional properties on the ledger, it is now, it equates to almost 46 cents per thousand of assessed valuation. That's how our property tax system works. As I mentioned, during the ballot measure, we promised that every year we would come to council and the community with an accountability report, what we accomplished during the previous year and what we plan to do in the coming year. We estimated that this levy, lid lift, would equate to about $4 million a year initially. In 2018, we're estimating it was about four and a half million. And this will, has allowed the city to, or the street department or division to forego the half million dollars of business license fees in these first two years because we're collecting more than anticipated. We may need to, we'll need to discuss that suspension later, but as, during your budget process, you may remember that conversation. And as a reminder, it's a nine-year duration. We've now been through little over two years of this. And the pie chart on the slide shows the central distribution of the levy funds. Almost half of it goes to street operations, and it joins fuel tax in particular to fund our day-to-day operations. The next largest slice of pie is for pavement preservation program, and then sidewalk, walkway, and crosswalks. So the biggest part of our street operations are things like this very glamorous job of right-of-way maintenance. It also funds emergent response. In 2018, we didn't have a whole lot of storm response, but when I come to you next year to report on 2019, we'll be talking a lot about this. Because the more time we spend doing these activities, the less time we have for our operating programs. It's all the same people, so we have to use our resources wisely. Instead of just showing you a bulleted list of a bunch of numbers, I'm going to rely on maps for this report tonight. This map shows 2017 and 2018 street operating programs. So the, essentially the orange colors on the map, those are 2017 pavement repairs. The blue is 2018 pavement repairs. And these are the repairs that are done by our crews. So you can see they were very busy in 2018. They were also very busy doing sidewalk repairs. That's the sort of purply-pink color that you see quite a bit up in the northeast corner and in central and kind of all over the place. So they, they really accomplished a lot in 2018. Pavement preservation, so we, pavement preservation didn't really have a very big start in 2017, but in 2018, we paved Beardsley Boulevard. This was almost entirely levy-funded, city-funded. We also did a pavement preservation project up on 228th, which was largely grant-funded, but also had some city match. And we did our first slurry seal project last year. So that was in the Frank Love Elementary area. And we had essentially two years of funding, so it was a pretty large project that year. Also in pavement preservation is crack sealing. You can see the crack sealing that was done to this roadway before we did the slurry seal and have done that throughout the city. And again, show you the map. So this map is different from the operations map in that it shows activities that are planned for 2019, in addition to work that was done in 2017 and 2018. You'll notice in the northwest corner, that light green color, that's the slurry seal area from last year. The colors for this year are the purple, and the, the purple is the paving program. So you'll notice in the southern part of town, we'll be doing another slurry seal project, that light purple. The dashed purple line is pavement preservation. So we have a project that'll be going on east of 405, I think it's called Woodinville Drive. And also crack sealing throughout the center of town and, and down in the south side. We did quite a bit northern end last year because the green colors are from 2018. What you'll also notice is that we have quite a few plans for 2019 non-motorized improvements. Some of these projects have been in design. One of them, you actually approved, you awarded the construction contract last week. So it's up sort of in the center of the map, like north center. And you'll also notice that there are some blue little crosswalk signs. So in addition to installing new sidewalk and, and bike lanes in some of these areas, we'll also be installing some flashing crosswalks. And they'll also be doing a pavement overlay because that's what that dashed line is on 19th. Well, also this year, we, we're in design on 188th, which has been a project that's the community has, has been asking for, for a long time. And we did get a, a grant that we're matching with, with Complete Streets funding as well as Safe Streets and Sidewalks funding. A great partnership we have going with our GIS group is this dynamic map. So this is a non-dynamic picture of the dynamic map. But what this does is it shows you different projects that are going on in town. So we have a specific tab that's specific to Safe Streets and Sidewalks. So you can go and either go on the map and click on one of the buttons, or you can go over to this side. And when you click on it, it gives you a little bit of information about it. So this is the 19th non-motorized project. It's up by Canyon Park Middle School. So here's a, a brief description of that project. And it also allows you to go to the project webpage, which has the schedule, what's already happened, what's coming up, traffic impacts, shows a map of the area. So this has been a really great tool for, for us and really appreciate, we just, we essentially load the information in and our GIS worked closely with us to, to get this map going. So it has Safe Streets and Sidewalks projects. It also has our other construction projects that are in design or construction. So I would encourage you to visit this frequently. We can see where we are. And that is essentially it. So if you have any questions for me, and I, I have my A-team here too, if you have any detailed questions for them.
Any questions? Get down here, questions? Catherine McNeil? You go up here. Oh, Deputy Mayor.
I was trying to get into it. Can you flash the, the webpage? Okay, SIP. I can't wait to explore it. I had a question regarding the grants. So we had estimated that we would be getting, trying to find the page, that we would be getting a certain amount of grant money per year. So it says for, an estimate of 400,000 per year for pavement preservation and 150,000 per year for sidewalk, walkway program. And I'm wondering if you have the numbers of what the actual grant amounts that we've received are.
Okay, so I'm going to look to either Eddie Low or Brian or Steve, somebody to rescue me.
This is Ryan Robertson, the Capitol Group. We did receive one grant last year, or this year actually, for the Wannina Woodinville, which is actually going to go in future years, but that was 800,000. So if you dwat it over two years, that's 400,000. And then as far as the sidewalk program, I believe, we received grant money for the 19th Avenue, 232nd, 23rd, the Canyon Park, our project as well. And I can't recall how much we received on that, but it was, it's a $2 million project. And usually we get 86 and a half percent back on that money, which is quite a bit. So.
Great. I was, I was hoping that your numbers were conservative and I wanted to give you an opportunity to brag about how much we actually are getting.
Actually, I do recall now, it was like 652,000, I think. We didn't get quite, so that's what it was on that project.
Yeah, I think it would be neat when you do this every year, just to list what, what we're getting because I, I think it's really, to me, it resonates when we're getting free money for just having that pot of money in our budget. It's a, it's a big deal to me. So I'm sure the residents would, would love to hear that as well. Great job though. I'm really excited. I, I really like the distribution of projects on the map and I think every neighborhood could probably say, okay, I see the results of that, that investment in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zornz.
Quick question. If neighbors feel like their neighborhood could be a candidate for some slurry seal, do, do we go out and survey that or is that something neighbors ought to reach out for?
Throwing another lifeline. Jack Berman.
Slurry seal is actually a, kind of a Goldilocks treatment. What it is meant to do is to preserve, preserve pavement that is pretty okay, but is starting to go downhill. So we actually have to be, and I'll, another thing that has to happen is that slurry seal is, I like to say it's a driver participation product. That means that it performs better when there is moderate traffic on it. If it's an area that doesn't have any traffic at all, it doesn't, actually doesn't do very well. In fact, that was one of our lessons learned from last year is I think that we put it on some roads that probably didn't have enough traffic to make it perform optimally. So I, you know, I would say that we, we haven't actually gone to the public to solicit that sort of thing. What we try to do is we look for neighborhoods that have a certain pavement level that it will work well in, that we can concentrate on. And there's about, very much off the top of my head, between six and eight of those areas that I think will work well. So I know I didn't directly answer your question, but that's our process and how we go about selecting slurry seal areas.
Well, you, you told me something that I didn't know, and your Goldilocks analogy is, is a good one. It doesn't, it doesn't fit all contexts of roads that you're trying to get longer life on. So that is good to know. So for neighborhoods who don't know how to assess their roads, but they, they have some concerns, I guess maybe slurry seal isn't the answer to it, but is it something that the city generally just kind of keeps tabs, you know? Somebody goes by and, you know, somebody from the city notes, hmm, maybe we ought to check this out? Or do you rely on, you know, citizens' input?
Mostly I rely on the input from myself, my inspectors and our operations groups to identify neighborhoods that, that would work well. And we also, another thing that we do is we go through a pavement rating for all of our roads every year. One year we do Snohomish County, the next year we do King County, and we get back from that a pavement condition index, a PCI.
Okay.
And I use that number to try to pick out neighborhoods that this area would be beneficial for.
Okay, so it sounds like there's a lot of monitoring that's going on on the city end. That's good to hear. So thank you.
Thanks.
So I like to be the historian on this one a little bit, but just real quick, to follow up with what Deputy Mayor was saying, what was our sidewalk budget before we had this levy pass?
I don't believe we had much of a sidewalk budget. We certainly didn't for the type of repair and replacement we're doing. We're very heavily reliant on grant funding. So, but yeah, I don't remember. Oh, 400,000 a year?
Okay. And the, and we've been able to leverage grants and so, I'm sorry if you're excited, but what's kind of the ballpark that we've leveraged, the leveraged funds, I guess? Not what we put into it, but what do we pull down from state and?
Right. So just for that 19th project, Ryan, I think recalled it was over 600,000 that we pulled for that one. We also received Complete Streets funding from the Transportation Improvement Board. I believe, was it 600,000? Half a million dollars from, from TIB this coming year that we'll be using for 188th, in addition to federal grant funds that we, or state grant funds that we received for 188th and some Safe Streets funds. So I, I believe, I want to say even just the state sidewalk grants, I want to say a million and a half to 2 million for those three projects. Seven, yeah, one and a half. And that's for 7th, 19th, and 188th.
And we did need matching funds to leverage those dollars into the city?
Right, right. It really helps us to go with something instead of just saying, we have these really great projects and we want you to pay the whole thing.
Pay for it all.
Yeah. It's been really great. And on the pavement preservation side as well, because we have some, some roads that compete really well for federal grants for the pavement preservation, so 228th is one of those. But then we have other roads that don't compete well, particularly in the King County side of town. So Beardsley, for example, we were able to do that overlay and rebuild part of the road merely because we have this additional funding.
Yeah, that's super important. I recall when we asked the public to vote on this levy, that the alternative outcome would have been that we would have had basically little to no street operations crews, so like snow plowing, repairs, painting, cleaning, vegetation control. Is that, do I recall that correctly?
Yes, yes.
So it is 50% levy, but I think it's important for people to understand that that's how we actually pay for those services. So if, you know, in seven more years, this is going to either go back out to the public or we would have no street, well, maybe we could find other funds, but that, that was the outcome in which the council was looking at. And I think it's important for the community to understand that that was a big push on top of it's important to preserve your roads and build sidewalks and safe crossings. But that's why we went to the public and the public obviously voted for, voted for levy. So just keep that in front of people, that if half of that levy is going to, keeping our, our street operations operational, so.
Right. And just so that folks don't feel like this is the only, the only report of this type, in the June edition of the Bothell Bridge, there'll be more details about, so the official accountability report as well as the financial information. So how much funding from where went to all these different pots? So Deputy Mayor, that's where it will show the grant funds that went into the projects that we completed in 2018. And more of that will show up in 2019 since many of these are moving into construction phase.
Sorry, I had one more question. Did we apply for or get FEMA funding for the snow plowing or snow management?
I don't believe that we were going to be eligible. I don't think, yeah, I, I don't think the emergency declaration impacted us.
Okay, bummer.
We always collect the information just in case though, so we're always ready.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. All right, so we're on to council conversations. Now, I know you're, you're not talking. Who would like to go first or is it me? Okay, Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I, I need to just one more time remind everybody that tomorrow night, April 17th, from 5 to 11, McMinniman's is holding a fundraiser for our parks. Half of the proceeds of the food receipts will go to the Parks Foundation. And also there's an auction. The whole goal also is to replace the sculpture at the Doug Allen Sports Field on West Hill, which was a dog that the kids from West Hill decorated. And so the Doug Allen Sports Field was named for a Parks worker that we had in the city who had an unfortunate death. But his parents have kept a beautiful flower deck there and sculpture has deteriorated, so now this is going to replace it. And I might add that there is pretty exciting auction items, signed footballs, signed basketballs. And so, everybody come. You could have a reservation if you want to, just call McMinniman's. Otherwise, you're still welcome. It's at the Tavern on the Green. So we should all be there and support our parks. Thank you.
Who would like to go next? We're still trying to figure this whole council conversation thing out. All right, we'll get there. Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I would love to be there and support, as always, our parks. However, I have to attend the NPRSA tomorrow. And I am super hopeful that Councilmember Agnew will join me. And we're going to have a quorum because we have a serious situation with our senior center and we have to get this rectified. So I would love to support the parks, do what I can to support them. You know I do. I just send money. But tomorrow's NPRSA meeting is going to be critical for us. So we'll be doing work at the NPRSA tomorrow.
Who signed the football? Now we're looking up who signed the footballs. Anything on this side of the dais? We're conversed out. It's okay, we can go home early tonight. I know, we got to meet with the city attorney. Hey, people usually love attorneys. We love our attorney. We good? Okay. So we're going to go into executive session for potential litigation pursuant to RCW 4230 1101I. City Attorney, how long do you think we'll be in executive session? 30 minutes will be in executive session until 9:00 PM. And then we'll be adjourned.